We'll call the meetings order at 6:05. First order of business would be, if you approve the commitments for the joint meeting, MASEC 2019.
Frontier, we call Frontier.
We'll call Frontier to order too, at 6:05.
I'll move to group.
Second?
Who would you like to call it for, Mr. Cantor, for Union or Frontier? Cause you're on both.
Well, the first, the only one on the floor is the...
Phil. Phil, I'm trying to say.
This is for Union and voting members.
All those in favor? Close, extensions, unanimous?
Do we have a motion for Frontier for the minutes?
Motion.
Everybody can vote except for Lynn.
Lynn, you were absent at the time.
All in favor for Frontier?
Actually, same from the Union 38. That's what we're here for.
You got it? You got it, sir?
Yep.
We'll start with two things. One is an announcement that we have a committee member that's not here this evening due to the birth of the son. Is that correct? Very correct. Michael Merritt. To enter our congratulations to Michael in the minutes.
Little baby boy, right?
Baby boy. Right? And I think we have enough new faces around the table that maybe we start here. Go around and introduce ourselves so that the new faces get to know some of the more veteran faces.
Governor McDaniel, Deerfield School Committee. Bob Denver, Frontier, Frontier Field.
Bill Cantor, Conley School Committee, and Frontier from Conley.
Damian Foswell, Frontier Elementary.
Carrie Atul, State Department.
Ashley Lee, Frontier is Conley's.
Olivia Leoni, Frontier.
Elaine Campbell, Conley Elementary.
Katie Edwards from Whately.
Maureen Nichols, Whately.
Kate Shaw from Deerfield.
Greg Gatchock, Simble.
Denise Storm, Conley.
Lynn Roberts, Frontier.
Lisa Shaw, Simble.
Jessica Farland, Thunderland.
Ethan Farland, Thunderland.
Yeah, there are any in Frontier, Frontier.
Charlotte Reed, Director of Business of the District.
Everybody knows your history. Bob Halla from Whately, Frontier, and Whately Elementary.
Ken Cutterback from Deerfield School Committee.
Judy Pierce, Frontier. Something I heard.
We have public comment next on the agenda. Do we have any public comment?
Speak now or...
No unfinished business. We will move on to the MCAS presentation with Sarah and Kim. I think we all would hand a few color-coded sheets that we could follow along with.
It's another exciting year of MCAS.
Just to kind of transition, we're going to do the joint meeting, so we have Sarah and Kim here. The kind of rundown of several things that we can do all together as one group. There's information that is obtained since individual town. If you want to follow up at the next meeting regarding that, we can do that. But as a general overview of information on each of these things, I think it was nice just to have it kind of all in one sitting. You hear different rules out of the union, it's such a kind of on list. So, and then just wanted to kind of set the stage for you. So, Dr. Mitchell.
Sarah Mitchell. So, I work primarily at Frontier, however, Kim and I are across the entire district.
Kim McCarthy for the Union, but Sarah and I work closely together. We're here.
Our first on-the-show presentation. So, just to start out with, a little bit of review for some of you who are new to MCAS, or at least as a school committee member. And then just a review for some that may have forgotten, because I know year to year I have to review a lot of information to make sure that we're up to speed on all the latest and greatest. So, the old MCAS went out a few years ago in the elementary levels, grades three through eight. They've been phasing it in. And this year was actually the first year that we are taking the next-generation MCAS at the secondary level of grade 10. And so, it will count for graduation requirement. So, one of the issues that they had with the old MCAS, and I showed this slide before, is that they calibrated it in different years. And so, therefore, if you had a student that was performing at about the same level, they could be anywhere from warning to needs improvement to proficient with the same score. And so, it became problematic for families as they're getting these reports and trying to interpret them. And they were pretty meaningless. The reason why that happened is the tests were developed at different times. So, originally in 1993, they had three tests in Massachusetts, as those of us that were around in those days. It was grades four, eight, and 10. Then the federal government said, "We want you to test grades three through eight." So, Massachusetts had to add tests in grades three, five, six, seven, or I guess it was tests in seven and grade eight. And so, it became very uneven in what was happening with the overall assessment. So, this time around, they developed a new assessment, and they were able to calibrate all those tests at the same time. And therefore, the tests are a little bit more meaningful as far as the scores that parents are getting. So, you can have a student that's getting a 500 in fourth grade, and if the student performs about the same in fifth grade, they're going to calibrate it so the student gets about a 500 in fifth grade, and so on and so on. So, a student who's getting a score in eighth grade, I used to say to families, "Don't worry about it if your student had a warning or needs improvement in eighth grade, because in 10th grade their score is going to shoot up." Now, it's going to be a little bit more predictable for students as they come through the system. One thing they did do this year, which was very interesting, is they calibrated the 10th grade scores, because they couldn't all of a sudden have all these students not meeting the standards and not graduating. They calibrated it to the old MCAS. So, we have students that are not meeting the expectations, which is in this red area here, but they are passing MCAS. So...
That's interesting.
It's good news for our students, but very confusing when we're doing that. So, there's four different categories. Not meeting, partially meeting expectations, meeting expectations, which means they're very on track for college and career readiness, and then exceeding expectations does that next level up.
Good. You'll keep hitting it for me. So, we made this chart with our schools in comparison to the state, and we took an average from our schools to do this. Now, we recognize that MCAS is just one score point, and we don't put all our eggs in that basket. But we do use it to inform our teaching instruction. We do use it for professional development, and we look at it through a lot of different lenses. But as you can see, green is in a standard band that's at state level or slightly above, and blue is well enough above across our district. Now, this new next-generation MCAS was really to bring the rigor up for the reading and writing piece, and they thought that'd align better with the college entrance and real-world expectations. And they really only had that one year of data point, 2018. So, our scores that look like this year may change next year based on what's happening in the bigger system, the statistical model that they use to align. So, don't worry if you see fluctuations next year. We're at the beginning stages of this rollout, but this is kind of good news. And again, we use it just as one data point. And it was such a pleasure to sit on teams with principals and teachers, because they look at it as this broad stroke, but then they also look at it in terms of standards, and what are we teaching, and what resources are we using? They look at it right down to the child level. "Oh, this worked. This strategy worked. This one didn't. Maybe we can do this." And it's very exciting to use this information to help steer where we go. But again, it's just one piece of information that we use. So, and this is a relatively new accountability report. It came out in 2018, and it might look a little different when you look at it. That's what Sarah passed out to all of you, and you'll get a chance. Sarah will go over it a little bit more, but you've got your school's accountability report. These are the indicators that they really look at, and it's a little bit different between a non-high school, which would be our Union 38 schools. There are schools that have grades three through six in there. And what they do, it's a three-to-one ratio. Achievement is three-to-one student growth. And so, they give another 10% for these other indicators. And obviously, we don't have high school completion in our factors this way. And the high school is a little bit different. It's like a 50-50 achievement growth, student growth. Life emphasis, 10%. I think it's placed on high school completion, and the rest of these are done in a 10%. So, they're weighted differently at different scores, but they give us good information. And the whole idea behind this is the state and the federal government wants to help identify schools and native resources. So, they, I don't know if I can hit it too.
Maybe.
But I want to go backwards. So, they use this kind of thing, where in the state of Massachusetts, there's 85% of the schools falling in this band, and 15% of the schools that will need additional resources to support. And as you know, in your heart of hearts, we're in this band here, and we have this score. So, if we turn it back to the last slide, and I'm thinking...
Nope, nope. I can't get it back. Actually. Okay. So, if you pick up, everyone has the accountability reports. This is all on the public DESI website. The orange is the Frontier. So, if you look at overall progress towards improvement target, that's a percentage from one year to the next that compares the school grouping that we're in with other schools like that. So, as Kim mentioned, non-high schools are any combinations of grades three through eight. High schools are grades nine through 12. And then they have this funny category that they call "other," and that's for any school that has a combination of non-high school and high school. That's Frontier. It used to be a much smaller percentage that they were comparing us to across the state, which made these numbers fluctuate a lot more. And we found that there were a lot of charter schools and a lot of those types of schools that were in that band. Now, it's a much larger population that we're being compared to, because it's any school district that has a grade 10, and then any grade in the non-high school level. So, it's, I think it's a little bit of a better comparison, frankly. And then if you look down below, you'll see all the categories that Kim was talking about before, and there were points assigned to each based on what the performance of that particular indicator was. So, four means that you exceeded expectation or exceeded the target. Three meant you met the target. Two, there was no change. Oh, sorry. Two was you improved a little bit, but you did not meet the target. One was no change, and zero means you declined. And so, you can kind of look at your individual school to see where it's all lining up on those particular indicators. So, as Kim mentioned, MCAS is not the only party in towns, and we use a lot of other data points when we're looking at individual students and we're looking at performance and curriculum and the growth of school. There's obviously all of the teacher-generated assessments that we're using, but in addition to MCAS, we use a couple of other standardized measures. One of them that we've been using for about 12 or 13 years now is NWA or the MAP system. It gives us information about performance in ELA and MAP, and it gives us reports such as this. We can really drill down to an individual student's performance, and these are the MCAS categories right there. Red would be the not met. This orange band is, you know, partially meeting. Yellow is actually partially meeting too, which is on the higher end. Green is meeting, and then the blue is exceeding. What you'll notice, it's a little dotted line here, and that is, sorry, that is actually the national level of performance. Sorry. Just jumped ahead all over the slide. And so, what you can see is nationally, the MCAS, students on the national level would not be meeting, they'd only be partially meeting the standards or the expectations on the MCAS. And so, that's kind of interesting. The MCAS standard is pretty high, so we use these other measures to balance it. So, now that you've already seen these slides, I can rush right through them. At the high school level, we just started last year giving the PSAT to all students in grade nine and all students in grade 10. We have about three-quarters of grade 11 students who are already taking it. We did that because we wanted another standardized score, but besides MCAS, we have a large percentage, about 80 or 85% of our students do go on to a secondary, either a two-year or a four-year college. And we wanted to have students have as much experience with this assessment, the SAT, as they had with the MCAS assessment, because they come up with these untimed tests, and it doesn't necessarily prepare them for a test that times them. So, again, this is our second year, and our scores on the PSAT, I mean, if you look at these scores, we're pretty high compared to the national average. In the overall, our students, our school is 921. I'm going to stop touching the screen. Compared to the state, which is 836, and compared with the national level, which is 860. So, we're quite a bit higher overall. But again, we're using this information to balance the MCAS and the NWA information.
Put the alarm nicely.
Yeah. Yeah, does one nicely. All right. So, that concludes our MCAS presentation piece. Questions?
Really, I want to point out is that if you hadn't picked up on it, we did very well in MCAS this year. But we're just, we're downplaying it, because the year we do well, we're, this is great. The year we didn't do well, we're working on these are different assessments. We're kind of showing that we always look at everything, but these are impressive scores across all five schools. So, I just want to say that, in case you're not reading that into text, you didn't actually say that. I know you purposely didn't say that, but I want to say that.
Yeah. That's because we come back next year.
It's tough. It is also difficult when you...
Take a good split.
Because they see where you are, and Sarah, you can maybe put this in English, but they see where you are, and then they, that's your new bar you have to reach. Especially in some of those smaller schools, where you can have a few kiddos differing, and all of a sudden that bar isn't reached, and all of a sudden, what happened this year? I mean, you know, so that's why we're looking at state average and that kind of thing, not just overall bars being met there. So, I just wanted, sorry. Cause there's a lot of hard work behind that, so I just wanted to make sure teachers in the audience hear that. We like this.
Thank you. Congratulations. You're here.
Our talk show.
Yes.
We're going to talk about professional development. And on your, hopefully in front of you, you all got a card. And what we did as an admin team is we took a poem and we wrote this and made these cards for every teacher, every IA, every kitchen worker, every bus driver, every crossing guard, every one of you, that we are in this together. It's all about connectivity, and through connectivity, we integrate our ideas, our hearts, our minds, our thoughts, to lift everyone up around us. So, it's our pleasure to give these to you tonight, and we really mean it, and the teachers really love this. We had a big kickoff for the PD. But how we did it last year is we surveyed the teacher to find topics, and two big topics emerged at the Union level. They were academic rigor and student engagement and trauma-informed practices. And what the teachers are really hungry for is integrating this work, not teaching in separate silos. I'm going to teach about academic rigor, and I'm going to teach about social, emotional, and trauma and behavior over here, but they want to blend it together so that they can be really agile in their instruction, in their classroom, to lift all the students in front of them. And to do this, we brought, we tried to take the limitations of the professional development calendar, because really at the Union level, we have, what, about 21 hours really. By the time you factor in parent-teacher conferences, and if we're driving from one school to the next, maybe it's more like 24 hours, but you think about that. So, we tried to group things together. We don't want to go wide, because we have a lot of stuff, but we want to go really deep into what we have, to really develop those skills and that growth mindset, to continue to meet diverse learners and diverse learning needs. And one of the big things that we did is start a district-wide PLC. It's actually a book club. And in it, we talked about trauma and children and trauma in your classroom, and how that can be a challenge for anyone in the building, and how we need to focus on that. These three books are on trauma, so Union teachers got to pick one that fit their developmental level or their interest. But everyone also got a way to manage self-care. As a teacher, you're putting it out there on the field every day, right? And some days go smooth, and some days don't. But the idea is that we are in this together. Connectivity, integration, to lift everyone, and we have to take care of each other. So, everyone got a copy of this. This is a book for trauma-sensitive school for the admin team, and then this is Amarzano's New Art and Science of Teaching. And teachers, when you go by on a PLC, Early Release Friday, they are assigned to groups. They have reflection. They have next steps. They're reading. They're talking. You hear it at the copy machine in the hallway in the teacher's classroom, and it's a really exciting thing to be a part of. There's so much going on with professional development. I'm not going to spoil it, because we have some people that were doing it, but I'll kick it over to Sarah to talk a little bit about what's going on at the high school level.
So, this is the first quarter of our years. We have a slightly different structure than at the elementary level. The advantage is we're all in one building, and we're separated by departments. So, the green, we have a lot of color coding. We love, Kim and I both love color coding. So, the green is kind of, we're all together as a school. These are things we're working on together. The yellow days are department days, and each department has a specific focus, and we're going to highlight one of those focuses this evening with some of our faculty. And then any of the kind of light brown are outside workshop professionals. So, we also, about every other year, we've been doing book studies, and this year is our third year working with assessment. The first year, we did an entire school-wide read of Grading Smarter, Not Harder, and this year, we had a selection of four books, all around assessment, all around grading. And so, teachers came down, looked at the synopsis, and then over the summer, they read one of these four books. The idea was that the first couple of days that we got together, it's really a discussion about what the book was like. We did some gallery walking, some sharing of ideas, some pre-flow of conversation, with the goal being that each teacher would select something that they wanted to try this year. We'll come back together in March for our second part of the book discussion and talk about how it went. Was it successful? We'll do some sharing out as a faculty. And by doing this year after year, it's helping us evolve our thinking around assessment and good assessment, because there's been a lot of change in assessment. For those of you who are in education, know the research is really just booming over the last four or five years, and not just around the MCAS and the NWA and those kind of standardized assessment, but all sorts of different assessments.
So, less talking and more showing. So, unless you don't have any questions, we'd like, it's...
I'm going to do just one last thing, which is you...
Can I take this off, too?
Yes, yeah. You get that.
And it's high school first.
We're going to have our science people come up. But we also gave you a two-sided sheet right here to have you have kind of an overview. For those of you who have been on the committee for long, we've been doing the PD Fridays for about five years now, and the first page with all the color on it is kind of historically what the big picture has looked like as far as PD. Now, you can look at our individual charts right there, and each year, the charts have looked like that. So, there's a lot of details and a lot of different things happening, but those are the general themes. On the back are all the outside consultants, presenters that we've brought in over the past five years that have kind of helped us to evolve in our thinking about these different topics. We try to stay with the topic for at least two or three years. I think assessment for Frontier, we're going to be at least one more year with that for four years. And then at the end of each year or during each year, we're collecting feedback from faculty. The first few years, we did a number of family surveys to see how the Fridays were working for them, and we're about to embark on another big examination of this particular model, this particular PD model in the Early Release Fridays, and how that's going. Is it working? Is there a better model out there? How would we make modifications with the model? So, we're kind of at that point for a deep dive and examining that. All right. So, with that, I'm going to invite our science department up here to share with all of you the real, what's really happening around PD. These are the people with their feet on the ground, and this is a tremendous department. We're very, very happy with all of our faculty in the science department, and we're happy to highlight what they're doing.
Thanks, Sarah. Hello. So, I'm Dulce.
Amy Wells, Middle School Science.
And Stacy Japley, High School Science.
And first, we just want to thank you for the time to have, to work together and to support our professional development, because having structures in place to do that help our growth, you know, we would seek it out regardless, but having that support built in is, helps us be really successful. And so, and it says a lot to us, so we really appreciate that. So, so, Science Fridays, I'm going to stand on this side. So, on Science Fridays, we've been using our Professional Development Days to support our relationship with an organization called ACCESS. And that's a meetup of two organizations called Mass Bioed and Science from Scientists. And these are two organizations that focus on, one on high school and one on middle school, and ACCESS brings them together so that we can work, bring both of those together. So, Frontier is one of only four schools that has been awarded a grant from ACCESS. So, our grant was $5,000 towards equipment, which included pretty amazing technology, which Stacy has some examples of once we're done.
I'm about to...
And we also, it also...
I'd just like to pause for a moment and tell you that's a beautiful thing. Thank you.
It also enabled us to get free presenters, so we have professionals who are coming and meeting with us and giving us professional development, and it's free. And they also give us their curriculum that they've developed for free. So, that's really wonderful. And again, Amy and Stacy both wrote that grant, which was really wonderful. So, okay. So, what is ACCESS? Access is a program that brings teachers, administrators, and scientists together. I teach middle school, just saying. And what they do is they provide teachers with vertical alignment, hands-on life science labs, as well as career experiences for students. So, what does this actually look like? So, if we talk about an example such as genetics, if we looked at a lesson, they came in and taught us about, so they gave us the curriculum, a lesson called phenotypes and genotypes that was going to be, that's going to be used in seventh grade, and then they taught us a lesson, and we got to do it hands-on. That was called "Science Behind DNA Fingerprinting." And so, these are directly in line with each other, and we're all experiencing it. So, you know, when I'm teaching eighth grade, I know what they've learned in seventh grade, and I know where they're going in eighth grade, and so I can support that as well. It means that we have common technology and equipment. So, for example, micropipacs that use in seventh grade, and then even in eighth grade, we use it when we're doing it around volume, and then they use it again when they get to high school, which is really wonderful. It also helps us really build intentionally our vocabulary. So, for example, in the seventh grade, they learn to use the word "control," and then in high school, they're going to deepen that and learn to use the vocabulary like positive controls and negative controls. And so, here's some comments from the teachers. So, it enables them to practice lessons that are, lessons that made abstract concepts Our teachers said, you know, these were some of the most hands-on, fast-paced teacher trainings, and they can't wait for them to come back. It's a mutualistic partnership that is the collaboration of great minds. And this is our favorite, of course. And this is a comment from a seventh grader who said, "I want to be a scientist because of this lab. I can't wait to do more of it in the future." So, that's it. So, any questions?
Do you see this expanding? Would you be working with other companies or other groups, or would they be offering another program in the future?
So, it's going to be a three-year program, actually. So, the first year, they do, we're doing two labs, and then the next year, they'll do a reinforcement of the two, and we get two new ones. And then the third year, is it another? I can't remember exactly, but it keeps building on itself.
Yeah.
And we get to have also like other schools come, like even our last Friday, when we had some teachers come from other schools as well, which was really nice, because we get to also meet others.
One of the cool things is we've received the grant just over a year ago to buy our old equipment, and now that the kids have come up through seventh and eighth grade, and I have them as ninth graders, we were... we were test-driving one of the new labs that will be part of Access. We were the, my intro to biology class was the first time it's been rolled out and actually done with a class. And the coolest thing was, is the kids had already handled micropipettes. So in being able to just do a quick refresher on how to use, how to do good micropipetting is huge. And with these organizations is getting kids excited and into the STEM fields. Mass BioTeach is supported by all the, a lot of the biotechnology companies, where the EpiCenter is right in Cambridge. And they just opened up a new office right here at the UMass Amherst campus. And so as the one student you had that says, "I'm excited. I want to do more of this." And so as we're bringing them up through the high school, they are using the equipment and learning about the equipment right from, as a freshman, in biology, in elective classes such as forensic science. AP Bio does it throughout the whole year. We're able to do citizen science and do studies. And so this is, the kids get excited. And that's what we want to see, is to take them to that next level.
And the Professional Fridays, like having that time, even without, you know, Mass Bioed, like we've done times where we're, especially like in the middle school, it's really wonderful. Like there's equipment up at the high school that we get lessons on so that we get to use them. And it's really wonderful too, because safety is really important. And having a chemist, you know, to talk to and discuss about how do we keep this really safe? What equipment do we use is really awesome. So we want to give a huge thank you too to everyone who voted for us to have those PD Fridays and have like our full day. Because those are so incredibly helpful. And it's like, we couldn't have done all of this stuff if we didn't have that time to do it. So that's been so helpful and it's great for our kids too. So thank you.
And, you know, the equipment they're using was just being invented when a lot of us were in high school. So the technology, the PCR machine, the polymerase chain reaction, you know, that's, that was coming into fruition back in the mid-eighties. The electrophoresis chamber, the DNA fingerprinting, all of that. So as an older person going, whoa! We've come so far. And to be able to bring this high-tech, but also bringing it down so the kids are understanding it and things that they may not be able to grasp in a large scale, they can see that molecular level and be able to play with it. So it's always a learning opportunity for us as professionals, to be able to bring all that new fun stuff to the kids and get them excited. And then it transports them further down the line.
Hello, everybody.
Yes, so here is Terry and Missina Polak. And they're going to just talk about a PD initiative at elementary level.
Yes.
And I can hit it, you don't hit it anytime.
Yeah, they're going to tell you how.
You can hear Paul.
Okay. So nice to be here with all of you. And we're really excited to talk to you about Empatico, which is something that we're doing at Whately Elementary School. We've been lucky because we've been making global connections at Whately Elementary School for about eight years, particularly with schools in Tanzania. But last year, a new thing came out called Empatico. And it's just streamlined everything for us. And it's so exciting. It's an online free platform for teachers to connect classes internationally or domestically. And so we were doing it all last year. And with a lot of administrative support, we got to the position where we wanted to do it in the other schools as well. And so now we have a district-wide fellowship for Empatico teachers. And there are over 20 people that are doing that from all four elementary schools. And so we're really excited. And we want to thank all of our very supportive administrators for always having our backs so that we can do really cool things with the kids. So this was not made by anyone with really great tech skills. But I think it's going to give you an idea of what our kids, this is all at Whately, but now it's happening in the other schools as well. And I think you'll get a really good idea about what we're doing. And Paul's going to tell you a little more about the fellowship.
So with the fellowship, we have 20 teachers who committed at the end of the school year to meet as a group for a day and learn about Empatico and how to get their class up and running, connecting to another class, as Terry said, around the world or in the US. And so these teachers have learned a little bit about the platform, which we said is free. And what's great about it, in my opinion, is that you've got teachers who are connecting, say, from Whately to, I have a connection in Ghana. I also have a connection with someone in South Carolina. And so those teachers actually connect on kind of like a texting, a messaging thread that's all very private and is not getting teachers or kids' names out there. So they're, we're really concerned and cautious about a digital footprint of what's going on with our kids. So these connections are happening and it's not like on the worldwide web that anyone can get to. So the teachers connect with one another. They plan what lesson they're going to do. And then those classes then get to meet at some point. And so that meeting time is through Empatico, kind of like a Skyping session. And it's been fabulous. Like last year, we had everyone from sixth grade to first grade who connected. And it's amazing what they can do. And I'm the library media specialist at Whately. And kids would come in and they'd have their questions about, "Do you have backpacks in Nigeria?" Or whatever it was, the question. And I'd take a little picture of them with an iPad. And then we'd upload that to their site. So there's a way to upload pictures and communicate even just before you even connect as a group class to class.
I think you're going to recognize one of the stars. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
Hi, nice to meet all of you. Hi. Natasha Lumber represents freedom.
When immigrants come from other countries to America to meet me of certain life, the first thing they see is the mortgage.
And it shows that, shows them that they are going to be, to have a good life and improved life here.
Hi, we're meeting sixth-grade students. And we are excited to meet you and tell us all about us. We live in a small town. We are all in sixth grade. The ice cream and tacos. What we do for fun is we dirt bike, which is like a motorcycle, reading, watch movies and sports.
Thank you for listening. Thanks for supporting the kids and the teachers. If anybody has any questions, be happy to answer them.
So are all the schools doing it now?
The four elementary schools, yeah. We're just getting it off the ground now. Yeah, it's very exciting.
It's really a fabulous program. So thank you for all you guys are doing. Glad it's going to the other schools. Thank you all.
I just wanted to say that over the years, we've worked hard to support professional development. The Friday program is, I think, is being used effectively. Personally, I think it's being used effectively. And certainly, the grants that are found and add to what the schools are able to offer is an indication that the teachers are certainly in minutes are taking advantage of it. I know it's always a conversation that's had in the school community in the spring, when we're talking about calendar and getting feedback on professional development, maybe from the general public. But it's important, especially in this day and age. They're talking about things that were happening when people were in high school or I was in high school, none of us could even imagine. So I certainly appreciate the efforts that Kim and Sarah lead for the district and various and the rest of the district.
Just to follow up on that. So the game plan is, as you know, the request was that the administration look at the professional development. So today was really about kind of showing where we're at, snapshotting time, showing what's going on this year. And it is the charge, I'll try to, it's my administrative team, that we're looking at how we're delivering it and to come back for a joint meeting in April to discuss where we're at, propose. And I'll get, it won't just be a surprise for me. I'll let everybody know prior to that meeting what's going on, of what we want to do moving on to next year. I don't know what that is yet because we're still in the process of kind of looking at how we do it, how far do we be here from what we have now? So that's kind of the, so today was really about just kind of giving you a snapshot of how, where we've been, what we're doing, kind of what it looks like, the importance of it. Because we're, you know, definitely going to fight to not go back to the old model was, which was no movement. We have a significant advantage over two parent other districts. And I mean, those superintendents, we talked about our professional development model. Everybody's envious of us. I'm trying to find someone who's got a better system than we do. Because we're able to look at programs, get time, get those programs in the classroom. Without this time, you're basically, you're going on your top teachers who are going to find that time outside of the workday, not moving a whole school together at once. So, anyway, so I don't mean to go into a little speech about it, but the game plan is to come back in the spring with a plan of how we want to approach it and try to get your buy-in to that.
Just thinking about the other constituents that are affected by early release, the parents and the families and the students, is there going to be consideration about that side of the program? Because clearly, this side is working very well. But I just want to reiterate that it's not necessarily ideal for the students.
Without, you know, the level and the level of the different problems that are, there are, the different issues are, one, I think that the professional development has changed through the years. And I think it's improving. And I think we've gotten buy-ins to the model from all, from all groups. The major, one of the major issues is that gap care and what to do with that and the cost of that. You have a professional development to bring in speakers, but you have the cost of, right now, we provide free gap care and what that means. And so, and the burden it puts on families who depend on school is childcare. So it's balancing those two things out. Right, I know. And I know that, and I know when the original program was rolled out, it was going to be great. There was going to be a lot of extension stuff that was going to happen and those kind of things. But it has to do with the amount of resources it takes to do that.
So we're going to, we're going to jump over the superintendent's evaluation and we're going to do the strategic plan next?
Right. So I sent out a electronic version, but some people like electronic people, some people don't. We do have to figure out as a committee where we're going electronic and where we're going with paper and that kind of thing. So I'll try to, between now and the next meeting with everybody. I got, I don't know how many copies to make at every meeting. And some stuff people want to kind of flip through and stuff people, some people want to just have the digital form. So I did kill a train. So I will pass these, the strategic plan. So this was created by, you know, I get to read this. This strategic plan was created building off of what we have been doing. Because I didn't want to leave, start anew without looking at what was created years prior to my arrival, the administrative team, which I think we should, I should have you all to bridge ourselves in case we need to start.
Ben Barshewski, Principal of Sunwell.
Director, Principal of Whately. Tina Job, Principal of Deerfield.
George Ladez, Principal of Frontier.
And of course, Kim and Sarah also as part of that group. And actually, I have a whole administrative team at this time, at these meetings. We kind of went through, we looked at a lot of different data, from the surveys that went out to the, we're working on professional development, areas that concern teachers, just general information that we've picked up for years. And kind of created the areas we wanted to go. So this is kind of spells out kind of the roadmap of where we're going. There is a, it says public version, it's actually, I want to say call it private version, but there's a working version that has a lot more information in it. It talks about how we're going at each spot. But we kind of, we're going to have to make it basic to go through. So I don't know how we want to do this in a sense of...
Get a roadmap.
Well, yeah. I would like approval from the school committee that you like the direction we're going. And I'm not sure, unlike school improvement plans, that have to be approved by school committee. I'm sure officially, this treaty has to be approved. The last strategic plan was approved. So I don't know if legality is it. But I am, this is kind of the roadmap of where we're going. This is the nuts and bolts of a professional development model, which is kind of, is the delivery for a lot of this. And it is, it's the, you know, the ministry's roadmap.
Can you provide it, executive, over to you?
Sure.
Semi-quickly?
Sure. And you know what I'm going to ask Sarah Louie, Sarah Louie's, Sarah Kim. Sarah, Kim to kind of go up and jump up as well, because just help me walk through it. So the first thing is that we are, we don't have in place, so help me jump in if I misstep, right? We don't have in place a strong curriculum management plan, which we need to develop to oversee the curriculum in the district. When does it have to be updated? What areas are strong, which areas are weak? And so we need to create a plan in that area. Within those areas, we also need to look at identified priority areas for students across all subjects. That's looking at data as well, from standardized testing to course, course feedback from teachers, that kind of thing. And you can see from there, creating personalized skills for each of those grades. So that, making sure our courses are feeding into one another, that one's building on the other. Those, it's not, those things aren't in existence, but those are areas that can improve. And we improve that, we're improving the structure of our system. So as we saw earlier, we are an above-average district. But in order to stay above average, we have to keep that focus really cool. Looking at equity, while there's not a lot of diversity in our district, there is diversity, and we need to make sure that we're reaching all, all learners in looking at, in looking at, I think the data there. And again, equitable access of all learners to the curriculum, not just making sure, not just looking at the data, but going diving deep. The next one is establish a delivery model. Sarah, can you jump in on that one? That was for, maybe deleted the other part of that.
Yeah, so we just want to make sure that we're communicating what we have as expectations in the classroom. Do we expect students to be arranged in small groups? Do we expect students to be engaged in collaboration and communication? So we need to have that clearly defined, so that the whole district is on the same page.
Continuing down, MTS S, that's, that was our intervention. It's a new, new thing that's being put out by the state. A few administrators, myself, went to a training a few weeks ago. I thought we were ahead of the training that the state was putting out, but we're going to take the positive things from that training and move it forward to the classrooms. Then we go a lot into professional development plan, onboarding program for new teachers. We're getting a lot of turnover, not teachers leaving, the people retiring, and we've got a lot of new faces over the last five years, and making sure that we have a proper onboarding program. The trauma and form care you heard about earlier, we are seeing more and more students coming to us with more and more things going on in their lives, for that term. And we need to make sure that the teachers have the skills and that the schools are set up to work with those students. The, to be, we talked about that, we're an engagement rigor. We need to continue to work with administrators to how we're, we have new administrators as well, how we are observing teachers and how we're looking at the same thing moving forward. We have multiple different buildings, people are seeing different things, and it's part of what we do monthly. We move our meetings each building, we get these classrooms together, we calibrate together, overseeing and communicating that. The MTS S training I talked about earlier, we're also getting this area. More PD involvement there with the content specific. And then, looking at student assessment, we talked about that again in the professional development earlier, looking at common assessments, homework, why we assess, what's going on in the classroom, see that cross, all through those assessment areas there, objective toward governance control. A lot of our job descriptions are out of date. We started talking about what's at work with teachers and how does that tie into different curriculum and those kind of things, so we need to save those. We need to work on public communication of what our curriculum and what's going on in the classroom, including the management plan, assessment plan. On a side note, we're also looking at, we just talked about this is the chairs meeting this month, regarding, we have to look at our union agreements, but those are out of phase as well. So that's kind of a tack on the end, most of those are construction. And then, creating this potential gap plan. We've been talking about that for the last year, for the next three to five years, and how that transparent, so that we're working with our towns to know what our needs are for the aspirants. Now, is it really fast over here?
Any questions, thoughts?
So this is not a school improvement plan, so the school improvement plans still have to come from each elementary school. As you can see, it's very easy for them to tie much of their plan through the strategic plan, because it is very, very wide breadth of what it comes. So the idea is that you create a strategic plan, then you have school improvement plans underneath it that work together. It really should not be, if one's very different than the other, then one's missing it. But schools still can come up with some of their own areas they want to work on. If it doesn't fit, then we can modify the strategic plan. It's not, we are small enough and nimble enough where we can modify it.
This is an overview that's supposed to take in off of by candidates, and each one of them can have their own separate plan.
Yes.
Exceeds up to this.
Absolutely, and there are, in some cases, some buildings that have worked on some things more than others, and so, but we're working on it together, because doing this in isolation is not...
I agree with you, but what I'm saying is that some schools are going to have their own area of concentration, where they want to pick up on something that they think is the light. The other thing is, I think there should be more emphasis on getting us out of the stone age and to a one regional agreement. It's a long-term goal. And I know it's, it's been up, it's been down in the last 40 years, seven or eight times it's been talked about, but we are missing the boat on school bus aid in the elementary schools. There is a little bit more cost because of the insurance, and we probably end up having to end up with parity for the teachers, but maybe not between the elementary and the high school. And I'm not an expert at it, but what I'm saying is, we should not just fluff it by.
So the groundwork I have set for that is that I met with the chairs, as you guys all know, we talked about that in the spring, and we were talking about creating a subcommittee, two subcommittees, one would look at the frontier regional agreement, and one would look at the union agreement, which we do not have in paper in front of us. So it, I really, when I look at the stepping stones, I'm not talking about regionalization, I'm talking about giving us some structure. So when we talk about what is the required way to vote for the hiring of the superintendent, we don't know. So I mean, those are some things that we, there's just some basic, I want to get some of the basic steps before we go into the politically fiery areas of, do we regionalize, do we do those kind of things? So it's kind of a two-step process. I want to get a document in place, and then we can amend the document. But it is also your purview, and that's kind of the course and point in the boat, and then in the aspirant, we're going to create committees to decide exactly where to get there. But that's, I'll be going to each elementary committee to look for volunteers to go onto that subcommittee to work with the union there. And then Frontier's going to do the same thing by looking at where do we need to tighten up that. So does it eventually get there? Maybe, but I want it to be one step at a time to get us to have a functional...
It might not have to be a law.
Well, Bob, it hasn't worked in 40 years since you've been around.
So, and there are persons, it does work, you know what I mean? I'm trying, I don't want to create more headaches, but there are kinds I have to call the attorney, like, I don't know, what's the, ready for the example? I'll give you the truth example then. Are we supposed to vote a new chair to the committee tonight? Is it a one-year term? Is it a three-year term for the, for the union? Other districts do multiple-year terms, you know, some districts do one-year terms. It was a light agenda, I didn't put it on in time, so just carrying through so we can add that to the next one. But we don't have any bylaws that says how long does one do those kind of things. I keep stumbling over those things, I keep writing it down, but it's not the best way to run them. Sorry, sorry, I got sidetracked.
So just because Bob brought this up, I think, sort of compelled to say that the issue of regionalization from K to 12 has been looked at repeatedly and exhaustively. I think I was part of the committee that Marty formed, I forget how many years ago. And the amount that we would save in transportation reimbursements, we would, we would more than lose that amount in the equalizing of the co-pays and deductibles from town to town to town. And so, the, right now, as it exists, unless there is a specific item of state aid, a specific act of the legislature that would enable us to start a K through 12 district at zero, which they used to do, it's, we cannot, for us right now, just to say, okay, we're going to do K through 12, would result in a huge financial hit for pretty much everybody. So like, it's, stop bringing that up, Bob.
Well, I agree with that. I'm living, so you can talk about it all you want. Well, while I agree with that, Phil, in the long term, if you look out 10 or 20 years, towns very hard for, you know, educating a very small amount of kids in one school. I think we still need to keep hitting it, but it's difficult, you're right, with equalizing.
Unless the state's going to give us the money the first year to change, and the biggest, the biggest change, correct if I'm wrong, is one teacher contract from another teacher contract.
Not closing just to have basic governance on paper before we move to any type of regionalization discussion.
We have a draft strategic plan that we're not going to alter.
We have a second for Frontier?
Second. Could I get a motion to accept from the union?
So moved. For Frontier, all in favor?
And for the union, voting members only? Put your hands up if you're voting.
Greg, are you voting on this?
Against. The opposition, none, any abstentions, none, so it's 11 to 12.
Thank you. Next is, next is another paper, another tree.
In this tree, I apologize for that, I meant to do it back to there. My evaluation, so again, the idea on this was, we are trying to create an evaluation, use the word model, that we can use moving forward, that it's easy to use, that it was easier, it's easier to do in someone's first year when things were going okay, and that kind of, I'm just going to fluff that on some. But, so this is a summary results of all that, of all those who participated in the, in the evaluation. And basically, you have to vote to approve the summary, so that it can be submitted to the state.
I just want to say that, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's probably the most people who have filled out the evaluation, got like 20, 25 members, 17 members filled it out online, and made it easy for us to do it online. I did it twice, didn't count twice, but I didn't think the first one went through. So, but if, if somebody says, I didn't get it online, that means something happened with the, your email, but everybody got it online, it was easy to fill out. There were some people that wrote some comments with it, but overall, we have a proficient valuation of the areas. Mr. Bob?
For Frontier, I believe we accept this evaluation.
Does anybody?
Then I want to say something.
Well, why don't you say something first?
And I think that there are some people that want certain things to be, not quite proficient or exemplary, and I would hope that they would discuss their individual issues with Darius.
Can you speak up, please, so I can hear you, Bob?
I would hope that they would discuss their issues with Darius, so that he can explain his position and try to mitigate whatever deficiencies he is in somebody's opinion, because that's the only way to really solve it.
The other thing I'll echo on that is, you're all my bosses, but you don't wait to an evaluation to give me feedback or something, you're waiting to give me feedback, and I can't.
Does anybody else have any questions from Frontier? All of us? All in favor from Frontier for evaluation, would you?
I'd make a motion from the union to accept the summary. I would like to say that I feel like I haven't turned in my homework, because my name's not on the list, but I just, just say in public how proud I am of the work that our superintendent has been doing. I've worked with him on several issues, several things that we've worked on together through throughout this past short year, I guess, but it's just been wonderful to work with, and feels great consensus, and really brings everybody together as a team to get things done, for the school, and the staff, and the students. Next time, I'll write that down for you, but I really appreciate it. So thank you. So I'm moving on.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm absolutely, I have a question. No, that's fine. I used to follow up with what Bob said, with some of the unsatisfactory or... I was looking through these, the only thing I see is no rating. Is no rating just meaning that they didn't vote, or does it actually is...
Yeah, there was...
I mean, go ahead.
So when I instructed it, I put in the ability to say no rating, meaning before members, I got the feedback that members in the past were forced to give a rating, even if they had no knowledge on the subject, and so therefore, they felt like I have to give proficiency, because if I don't give proficient, I have to give a reason why, but I have no idea if I need good instruction. I mean, some of these areas are very difficult. We talked about how the evaluation is difficult, because it comes from the state, and there's some things that you may not know the answer to, so I created an extra column that's actually not in the state thing, but it says, I have no information on this, and I can't rate this area.
So really, there's some negative feedback there, really what Bob was... Well, there's one, there's one area in communication where there were some needs improvement ratings that were submitted, but by and large, it was 60 to 70% of the respondents were rated at proficient. Somewhere between 15 and 25% said exemplary, and then the no rating was the other category. So this overall, I believe, the cumulative rating is about 68% proficient, 20, or 18.8%? Oh, that's just the standard, the first standard, but somewhere around 20% exemplary, and the rest would be no ratings. And the part of the problem is that when we go to an assessment, or this assessment, we distributed it at a time when we had several new members that really had no experience, on top of not understanding the state's categories. So it's really, I think it's a, it is the strongest, I mean, it's the most participation that I've had a chance to see an evaluation done. Having it online, was that helpful for people?
Yes.
Certainly, I know it certainly made it easier for me, because I didn't have to do the tabulation at the end of it, but I think it, it takes some thought to work your way through the standards that are essentially established by the state. It's a really tough, I mean, when it first came out, we had a special training of almost an hour and a half on the new evaluation system for superintendents, and it's like, how are we ever going to get through this? And this really made simplified things for everybody, and by the end, people found it helpful here.
I want to say two things. First of all, I used the no rating in several occasions, probably more than anyone else, because absolutely, there were some issues that were raised there that I had not a clue as to whether he had done well or badly, or a lot or a little, just, and so it was really useful to be able to say no rating, and to focus my ratings on issues that I had seen him in action on. And so I thought that was great, and I hope that's able to be kept. The other thing was, am I missing something? But I see a summary for his rating in each of four standards, but I don't see an overall summary. Is that on purpose?
I don't think, I don't know the software that we've used, and I didn't get the chance to ask if we can get an overall summary.
I'd have to go through and do that, because there was not a total score of each one as it was created, and try to create that in the future and such.
This is the first, first attempt, so we can certainly find out if we can get the overall summary. But I think you'd find that it roughly is in line, because the percentages are pretty close in each category, as I look through it.
I mean, I think it's a, you know, you don't want to write too much into one overall number. On the other hand, in communications with the town side, in my town, you know, I try to keep them informed on things, and one thing would be, well, how's this new superintendent doing? And here, well, this is how we rated him. And here, well, this is how we rated him. And, you know, sometimes being simple is oversimplifying, but it also makes it understandable. And in this case, we've got what I consider to be a superintendent doing a great job, my, my no rating notwithstanding, and, you know, I like to let people know.
I can create a summary sheet, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, any other questions or comments? I will echo what Peter just said, I think Darius has had a strong first year, and I was pleased to see that other committee members felt the same way, so, with that said.
Did we get a second? We did. Oh, we have a second.
With that being said, for the Union, all voting members, all those in favor? Janamus, thank you, and thank you, Darius. Brad? Jump from that, it's great.
So I put the policies on, it's a lot easier to break it up and do the policy votes five separate times, we go all at once, it doesn't seem very controversial in nature.
Get a motion for you.
So on the, on the first one, the KHC, we need a motion, some vote, for Frontier, in second. Phil?
Sure.
All in favor from Frontier?
And I would take a motion for, take a motion for the Union for KHC policy.
Second?
Any discussion? Very young, all in favor? Thank you.
Policy, and I M G A.
Some vote.
Second.
Phil, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. And for the Union, do I have a motion? Motion. Gregor? Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Sure, so, last year, there was a big push by a lot of school committees to vote to support the legislation for Promise Act, the Student Opportunities Act, and Jessica, who attended, she attended, I want to speak for you, but you attended, you noticed that we were among the, we were.
The MTA, MMTA member, they're asking their members to come to the school committees and try to round up the last remaining school committees to have a pass resolution in favor of the Promise Act. This is a little complicated, say, because when it passed the Senate last week, it was creating the Student Opportunity Act, so we would be using the original wording to pass it in.
And so, and Alice said, Jessica, it's come a, it's come a long way from the beginning, meaning that, for those of you, I'll give a quick, and it's already been turned into a long night, but just kind of give a quick overview, within the Student Opportunity Act, the good news is, they're looking to put a lot more money into public education. Overall, that's the good news. And they're also looking at the different, they're trying to create subcommittees to look at the different funding models and that kind of thing, and where that goes, we'll see. The bad news is that we fall in an area where we're not going to see much of this money. And there may be a few thousand here or there, but it's a much longer explanation that probably should given in smaller groups that we can ask questions, comfortable asking questions at the member meeting, but how we are funded, and how Chapter Seventy funds are used to make up the difference from the foundation, we fall in this, I started going down that road, I won't go down that road, we fall in an area where we won't see much of this money, because we overfund our schools, okay? In comparison to what the State's saying.
And we still don't know how much towns will be expected to pay, so we could have some numbers on, kind of, what we'll get, which is very minimal, over, over those seven years, at the end of twenty, twenty-seven, it's very little amount increased from where we are today, but we still don't know.
And right now, the numbers are all over the place, and a lot of different revisions going through, so there's a lot of, the excitement is correct, that there's a lot of good changes, because things are being addressed that have not been addressed, but there's still a lot further they need to go in order to look at schools, systems like ours, small towns with declining enrollment, where the local taxpayers picking up the majority of the bill, or seems to be picking up more and more of the bill, so there's a lot of, you know, we kind of get the weeds of it, but they're, and then, on top of all that, it has to be, if you appropriate, at the way each step, each year moving forward as well, so it's, some of it, it sounds good, but they also, there are areas I've seen through the years where they cut in these different areas, so we'll see how, we'll see how it plays out, but it is exciting they're, they're moving forward, so.
Are there any clauses in it that we might live to regret? Where they can tell us what to do, just about virgin schools, or if it's sort of, we're going to lose control, if somebody can get more authority?
Are you talking about, are you talking about the resolution this evening?
No, no, I'm talking about the Act. What's in it? I hate to vote for something, or I don't know what the detail.
That's the difficulty where we're at now, because.
Nobody knows yet.
Well, and it's also, this was, most schools voted this before the Act, the bill was actually put forward.
This, this resolution is supporting something that's not really on the floor. I mean, a lot of the parts are in here, but it's not. I'd rather see a, I'd rather see a complete scope on what's involved before I vote to endorse something, it could just turn around, take away a lot of our prerogatives. We don't have any prerogatives left.
I'd rather do that, take away any of your prerogatives.
Right, yeah.
It's long, it's complex, but it talks about just giving schools more money, and it has its own.
But we're not going to get it.
No, but some people will, so it's a good thing.
We will be fully funding the reimbursement for charter schools over the next four years, against some transportation, but not regional transportation, some transportation for special education, maybe not, some circuit breaker and stuff, but.
So the way, don't go the weeds, because I'll be in today, that they're going to not, actually, they're not going to fund transportation equally with the rest of everything, they're funded second, so, so it's, again, they're playing with the numbers already, where it's not going to have an immediate effect on some of our schools, so.
I like the idea, Bob.
But we can discuss that. So, but, so, but let me just kind of go through what we're trying to say here, is basically, we're, we're saying that we support, that we want free public schools available to all students without exception, and that our foundation's our democracy, that no matter where they live, they deserve high-quality public schools to teach, provide them with well-rounded school experience, and interest in academic social emotional things. And the state funding budget for termistate each, to each district, has been woefully out of date for years, so this is what we're asking them to look at, therefore underfunding our districts by more than a billion a year for essential educational service. And would phase out and update the foundation budget formula, we'd love to see that happen, bring more money to all five of our districts, pass their, an additional state aid, and let's fail to pass any foundation legislation in the last session, give districts and engineers and students without the necessary funds, supporting schools our students deserve. So, that's basically what we're asking at the same. So we agree, I, I don't think there's anybody on this committee that doesn't agree that those are all changes we'd like to see happen. The problem is, they've already had a bill based out of this kind of promise in the works, with that, we all agree with that, we agree that they're heading in that direction.
Do we change the wording to reflect Promise Act?
Sure. Student Opportunity Act.
Student Opportunity Act.
As long as that's a scope on my, Peter.
I have a real problem voting for this based on item number four on the list, because it does not phase in more money for all our schools. We have no, no way of knowing that that's what it might do, and it sounds like it's not really going to do that. So that, to vote for, it seems, you know, the rest are just sort of.
Change the word, put it to Mike?
Yeah, but it's like, it's like, you know, Darius had said, I think some of us have tried to look in to find out what we could, about what this is, and it was clear to me that, you know, we're very likely at the end of this seven-year process, going to end up with no better off than we are right now. And so why should we be supporting?
We have, I mean, so, let's just put this word, it's symbolic in nature, and last year, when this went around, I was probably my second or third as interim superintendent, I probably wasn't even brought out, so I was not on the ball in this in the beginning, so, so we kind of missed that, missed it out. If the committee doesn't want to add on to that list, I understand, because we're in a different phase, we might be, I don't want to get into an argument about something, this is kind of a declaration that we're supporting public education, but we're supporting a change in the way the State's looking at it, however, we're now, it's now being linked to an exact bill that's in the Senate right now, that has a lot of controversy in it, about where the money's going, the numbers that are coming out, the governor came out with different numbers, that's causing more of an upheaval, because these numbers aren't agreeing with the Senate's numbers, so, and when this thing gets done, it's probably going to look nothing like it is now, by the time it gets, you know, things get kind of chopped to half top. So, this resolution's really about supporting our legislature to make change, and maybe we just, and get added to the list, if everybody else is supporting, the legislature to make a change, or we just stay quiet at this point, I think, so I kind of just wanted we'd understand that's where we're at, we're not supporting that bill, or say, the work that's going behind the bill, the changes, and so, I know it was late coming in, there was a lot of talk about it, and as Jessica pointed out, hey, we're not even on the list of supporting this, you know, venture going forward, it should be added there, so I wanted to bring it forward here, so.
Do you know, do you know of any other schools in our district area that haven't voted for this, or won't vote for it? You could say?
No. I think the rest is pretty comprehensive, most schools.
So I, when, there, there's some, some of us that went, when the Joint, when the Joint Education Committee was doing their Chapter Seventy Foundation Committee Roadshow this summer, there were some of us that went and gave testimony to them when they showed up in Northampton, and then again in Pittsfield, and any of the other. And, and the thing, in the room, it was amazing, the Promise Act had like all the energy of everybody in the room, and, and a lot of, like, I actually believe, what we really wanted to do was to try to get them to explore changing the structure of the foundation budget and how they calculated, and those are things that they actually could do relatively easy, just change a number here or there, and couldn't really get any momentum on that, because all the oxygen in the room was sucked up by the Promise Act. And, and whenever one person would talk about something that would help us, somebody else would stand up and say, Promise Act, Promise Act, Promise Act. It is a good thing, though, but I just wish it would come out in a different year, with a chance to do a foundation budget.
Chair of House was not really, was lukewarm to a lot of that change, so it was kind of depressing.
The most promising part of the Promise Act is the fact that it did pass that, well, what's still lying in the budget, is putting a commission together to look at the Chapter Funding, the Chapter Seventy formula for equity, predictability, and access. So, it's in there, does that mean a report that goes and sits on someone's desk, or is that going to really be an outcome? Well, that's, you know, you have to see if that's going to work, if it's part of it, it's sarcastic, but it is at least there, and that's most important, I think, to us as a district, maybe I'll look at.
If we considered adding the word potentially bringing more money to all five of our districts?
Since we already, since we've said it's kind of passed, it doesn't look great right now.
The ones that need help are going to get more help. So, yes, that's true.
I disagree with what you said, Peter, just.
I think it, I mean, I think it will, if you look at it, the Promise Act would phase in an updated foundation budget formula, bringing more money to all five of our districts. It will do that, it just won't do it at the amount we were planning, but it will for other people who really, other schools who are really in tough change and need it, so it's not going to be done, but we're better off than that.
So we're going to vote on, I think Bob has made a motion for Frontier?
I do.
Has anybody seconded for Frontier?
Second.
Any other questions for Frontier? All in favor? No? Sting?
It wasn't the man.
What's asked? We have a favor of yes on, six, seven, nine. Sting?
It's a fun exercise.
No?
It's all united this year.
It's all united this year.
I'd make a motion in behalf of the Union, thirty-eight.
Second. Elaine? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please, forty members, vote with your hands up. Opposed? Here? Ten-one? Ten-one's here. What's that? He was, he was gave his hand up or down.
Nope. Motion, can you, quick, all keeping things, can I need each chair to come forward to sign the IA, IA contract, or resign, remember the settlement agreement, I have an official contract that needs to be signed. Additionally, remember how this works, we're going to have Frontier's meeting, the agendas are purposely light, meaning that there's just going to be financial, financials for the month, and principals' reports, Peter has a little bit of stuff, and, and someone has a little bit of discussion around the principal report. But outside of that, the next month, speaking for Shelly at this point, is going to be a concentration of where we are financially, Shelly is getting the base, living with those books, trying to get them in order, so that we can have a more in-depth conversation of where we are of closing of the books, of each of the elementary schools at the November meeting, and then start building the budget process for next year. So November is all about budget, so, fun, fun. Today, the message thing there, I just wanted to kind of say this, people go off, so, we probably have about a ten-minute Frontier meeting, goes up, the elementarys can go to their corners to conduct business, and like I said, they're purposely light, there shouldn't be really any controversial of any of those.
So do we need to wait for Shelly to come to us if there's no change?
Should we get to this?
Or move on? I'm just going to pass out the warrants. I don't have anything to report, other than I sent the expenditure reports around, so if you have questions, and you want to wait, I'm happy to take questions.
So you know what, what we'll do is, we'll have Shelly go out and pass out the warrants, and then come back and get the Frontier, we'll just skip around her at the Frontier stuff. Frontier?
Yes.
Every motion? The chairs, regulars, all in favor?